Everyone could take their seats. Council is about ready to begin for the study session. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight and call this study session to order this November 5th, Monday night, 2018. Member Questa will be late this evening, hopefully arriving from a flight he's just gotten off of and will be here for the regular meeting. So our first item up tonight is our EEF discussion. And here to present is... All of a sudden, I'm blanking your name. Maria D'Andrea. We have so many Marias.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We don't have the PowerPoint up tonight, but I'll walk through that briefly with you. You do have that as an attachment to your agenda, and it was posted as well on the city's website. Primarily, we're here to talk about two issues tonight. Excuse me. Let me introduce first. We have with us to answer questions if needed. We have Steve Rickles with the firm Spencer Fain LLP. They're the attorneys for the EEF Foundation. And then we also have Tom Pelz with Q-Tech Rock, who was the attorney who set up the original CAM agreement and was part of the original establishment of EEF way back when. So he's served the city for quite a number of years and has a lot of history on this topic as well. I'll refer to them if need be. I've done a lot of research myself, reading through a lot of documents to familiarize myself with EEF. And tonight, we're coming to you to talk about two subjects in particular, two recommendations from staff that we've made. And basically, that is to talk about the process for having the city council actually become the board members for EEF. And then, secondly, to determine if we should proceed with a forensic audit of all the EEF finances and whether or not we should conduct that. So those are our two topics tonight. I'll give just a brief overview, then we'll leave time for questions and discussion. So EEF was originally established back in August of 1997, and really was set up as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of overseeing the redevelopment of the Cinderella City site. So the previous mall that was located here, of course, was then ultimately demolished and redeveloped, and the underlying property was then managed with a lease to Miller Weingarten, who was a local developer. And basically, through that process, EEF, the land was originally dedicated to, most of it was dedicated to the city, and the city in turn then turned that over, transferred that ownership over to EEF to manage that. So really, that's been the primary purpose since then. They oversaw the cleanup. There was some environmental remediation that had to take place, both some underground stuff as well as the asbestos within the existing buildings. And then, secondly, to then go into the future, some certificates of participation were issued in order to redevelop not only parts of the site, but then also to redevelop this building into its current use. So with that, articles of incorporation were completed back in 1997 at that date, as well as bylaws. And those bylaws were really what lays out how EEF should be organized and formed. And originally, those original documents were set up that it would be three individuals from staff, who were actually the EEF board members. At that time, it was designated as the Finance Director, the Engineering Manager, and the Director of Neighborhood and Business Development. So over time, positions have changed. And so, for example, even though it specified the Engineering Manager, the Director of Public Works always retained a position on EEF, and never, the bylaws were never changed. Similarly, we now have a Director of Community Development, as opposed to a Director of Neighborhood and Business Development. The, really, those three duties, the three primary duties of the EEF Board include managing the certificates of participation, which are due or set to come up on June 1st, 2023, is that final payment. So we have about four more years. Then we also have a sublease within the Bally's or 24-Hour Fitness Building. We rent that sublease. That was set up very, in the very beginning. We've had a couple of different tenants in there, but really, the idea was to activate the space more and to have that lease where the city could participate in trying to find some different companies that could fill that space. Most recently, that company is The Guild, which offers alternate workspace for individuals. And then finally, the common area maintenance. So that area is all the areas within RTV, within kind of the amphitheater space, as well as some of the streets and sidewalks and all the, again, common areas within the existing 55-acre parcel. So we oversee things like the irrigation, the fountain maintenance, site security, as well as snow plowing, that sort of thing. We also do some, a little bit of work in-house, so we manage those different various contracts and do that maintenance through a staff person, a half-time that is charged back to EEF, .45 of one of our engineering technicians, and then a small portion, .05 of our finance manager is also charged back to EEF. And that recoups around $45,000 per year. We also charge them for some storage down at the service center and different items like that. So with that, that's the EEF Board makeup. Then with the finances, we have had quite a few, as Council knows, we've had quite a few comments made about EEF finances and how those various finances have been managed in the past. And so, given the turnover in staff, we are recommending that the EEF finances be, we have, conduct what's called a forensic audit. So they would go through an independent audit firm and actually look through the finances to verify whether there's been any mismanagement or not. With the changeover, we have had some changeover in staff, and with the current plans for redevelopment potential of the site, we are also recommending that the current EEF Board members, which consists of myself, the Community Development Director, and the interim Finance Director, that we actually get, have more of a hands-off approach, and that instead, the city council become those members. So as we redevelop the site, obviously, we want city council to be very involved in that process, to have a lot of say and voice. And so we think this is really the right time to come together and make that change. This allows staff to truly be staff, make recommendations on behalf of the city. Both, really, all three of those positions will be heavily involved in any redevelopment of the site. And so we think this is opportune time to make that switch. This would involve very little effort, really, just amending the bylaws, and we would bring those forward to you probably sometime in December here to make that change effective as of January 1st. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Counsel, you have questions? Councilmember Berentine.
The information that's from the meeting from June 25th, and makes it very clear from the attorneys that set this up, you guys have been involved for a long time.
Councilmember Berentine, can you pull your, yeah, either one or the other?
Sorry, usually my voice will carry enough. I apologize for that. The attorneys have been involved for a long time, and as this meeting on June 25th of 2018, the EEF meeting, Inglewood Environmental Foundation, and in several places here, somebody was nice enough to write it, type it all out for me so that I had a transcript of it. And you make it very clear several times that it's very important, there's a separation between the city and this EEF. EEF is a separate organization. And the reason it's supposed to be a separate organization is that's the only way that it could go ahead and protect the city from the potential liability at the time that apparently was somewhat bypassed and doesn't exist anymore. And I think you mentioned that EEF issued the certificates of participation.
That's correct.
So it is a requirement, since the certificates of participation created debt, and it's a requirement that that be separate from the government, because otherwise, in order to go into debt, according to Tabor and state statute, we would have to have a vehicle to pay that back, and that would have required that we have a tax or a bond that the city did that. So EEF issued the certificates of participation as a separate entity, and therefore put, created debt, that the citizens were not involved in and did not get to vote for. If we go ahead and put the city council as the board, aren't we violating Tabor then? I mean, the issuance of those certificates of participation then, it's, I mean, we already have a situation where we really don't even really have a separate entity to begin with. We could argue that. But if we argue that we did have the intention of a separate entity to go ahead and protect the liability and to issue those certificates of participation, aren't we going to be in trouble then under Tabor for violating the law?
I'll let the attorneys answer that, but my understanding is no, because that has already been issued. So now, we have confirmed with the attorneys that it's okay at this point to make those, the mem, it was always originally set up in the bylaws that anyone could, the city council at its discretion could appoint people to become the EEF Board. They just happen to be those three members of staff. So it's well within the city council's right to set up those positions at any time with the membership that they choose.
Then I'll wait for the attorney to answer the question, whether we go ahead and you can't issue a debt, bypass Tabor, bypass the citizens and the voters, and then later on go, well, since we already did it, now we're going to become the entity. I think that's of some concern, but maybe they can address that, because I do realize that we had the power to go ahead and appoint.
Director D'Andrea, would you like to call one of them up or two, or both of them?
Certainly, thank you. Yeah, which one of you would like to take that?
Just so we all know who you are, would you reintroduce yourselves? Thank you.
Yes, I'm Steve Rickles, an attorney with the firm of Spencer Fain LLP. And I was really the original tax attorney that was involved in creating EEF and getting its tax-exempt status approved as an integral part of the city. And I won't pretend to be...
Could you pull the mic to yourself? We have live streaming, and it really makes it easier for people that are watching at home. Believe it or not, we do have people watching at home, so.
Sorry. I won't pretend to be knowledgeable about Tabor. I guess the only thing I would say is that where, the proposal, as I understand it, is that the members of the city council become the Board of Directors of EEF. So EEF would still continue to exist as a separate legal entity. It wouldn't, it would become part of the city, it's just that the city council members would become the board in lieu of the staff members.
Well, I think it's arguable right now that it already is part, that it already is part of the city. But Tabor was passed in the mid-'90s. This was created in '97 and I believe '99 respectively, and then is when the other IRS letter came in. So Tabor would have, had to have been a consideration at the time, and I believe that's why the certificates of participation were done in the first place, in order to bypass Tabor. So if we become the board, then aren't we violating that law? That's what I'm trying to...
Sure, I can respond to that one. My name's Tom Pelz, I'm a partner at the firm of Q-Tech Rock, and I've been a public finance lawyer since 1984. And so Tabor was approved in 1992. It did precede the issuance of the certificates. Just to sort of clarify things, the city's only obligation in this financing, which has been refunded a couple of times to save, to save money, most recently, the current certificates are out at a 2.12%, but the city's only obligation is a lease. And that lease is subject to annual appropriation, and that's what avoids an election pursuant to the provisions of Tabor. This, the city council makes a determination on an annual basis, when you're going through your budgetary process, as to whether or not you want to renew the lease. And if the lease isn't renewed, there's a mortgage on this facility that can be acted upon, and that's the ultimate security. And EEF was initially formed for some dual purposes, part of which was environmental activities that were undertaken in EEF. The other part of it was for purposes of the financing, because the structure at the time that was preferred by the market, if you will, the initial certificates were insured by a bond insurer, was that there be a mortgage on the facility. And in order to have a mortgage on the facility, the city cannot mortgage its assets. That would be deemed to be a debt under the Constitution, even preceding Tabor. So for purposes of doing the financing, facilitating the financing, it is an obligation of EEF. EEF participated out the lease payments, the annual lease payments that the city makes, and it's quite common under Tabor to structure financings in this way, and virtually most municipalities have undertaken these types of financings. As Council was saying, in the event that the makeup of EEF were to be transferred to others, to council, that obligation is currently outstanding. In my opinion, it would have no effect on the legal obligation relating to the certificates. The council still acts pursuant to that lease and makes an annual determination as to whether or not it wants to make lease payments until 2023, which is the, June of 2023 is the final payment that's due on those outstanding lease payments.
Thank you. Perhaps stay there, I have another question.
If you could at some point address why several times in this meeting, you're insistent that there be an arms length between the city and EEF in order to go ahead and have any of those protections from either the liability or the ability to do certificates of participation, because I really haven't gotten an answer yet, but I'll go ahead and let other council members discuss.
I'll let you answer that, and then we have another...
The meeting was in June of this year?
June 25th.
You sure that was me? Because...
I don't know whether it was, I don't know whether you were there or not. I'm telling you the information that was provided at the meeting. Your first name again?
Tom Pelz, at Q-Tech Rock.
The two, excuse me, Councilmember Berentine, the two attorneys who were present there were Mr. Rickles and Mr. Miller, who's joined us.
They're identified by their first name. Could you give me their first names?
Steve and Mike, please.
Okay. Then, I apologize, one attorney, and no, looks like, not really. But that's what was discussed several times by the attorneys who, in this meeting, claimed that they set up EEF, originally set up EEF. Okay.
Mr. Rickles, would you like to respond at all?
Well, from my perspective, the essential purpose for creating a separate entity to redevelop what was then Cinderella City was to insulate the city from liability in connection with that process. Cinderella City was full of asbestos, the remediation process was a major, major undertaking. And the concern was that if the city acquired the property and did this, that the city might incur environmental liability as a result of that. So, so the property never, never wound up being developed by the city. Instead, we created the separate entity for that purpose. I think, I don't know that the certificates of participation were even on the radar at that point, but...
So maybe, maybe it'll be clearer if I go, this is, I understand, I believe it was you saying the critical thing was to create enough separation between the city and the redevelopment to insulate the city from the environmental liabilities, and you go on that, it's in several other places, on how important it was in order to have that separation, that protection, and the ability to go ahead and do certificates of participation without a vote of the people, it had to be a separate organization. And so it's the separateness that I'm questioning, that if council becomes the board, there is, there isn't even the pretense of separation, as I'm concerned now. That's the question.
Thank you. Would you state your name for the...
My name is Michael Miller.
Thank you, Michael.
Unfortunately, I think you're conflating two separate issues.
Okay.
First issue is a legal, real property issue. And as Mr. Pelz explained, the way the certificates of purchase are structured, EEF owns the property, city leases the property, the city pays a rent payment which services the certificates of purchase. The city gets the revenue to make that rent payment from the various revenue streams coming off of this project, primarily the sales tax coming out of Walmart and the other revenues coming off of this project. From a real property point of view, if you were to collapse EEF and there was a merger between EEF and the city of title, we're now talking a real estate issue of title, then the lease would be extinguished, and it would collapse the COP and would give the holders of the bonds the right to act on the mortgage. That's a totally separate issue. The other issue was, at the time, in the 1990s, when the development was taking place, it was important to create a separate entity to insulate the city from potential liability of the environmental, of the old Cinderella City. That's a totally separate issue from the real property issue. That was, and I believe that's what is referenced in the transcript that you're reading from, at that time, it was important to keep EEF separate. And that was one of the reasons why we had, it, there's no alter ego here. The city actually appropriated separate money for EEF and transferred money to EEF as a separate entity. EEF operated as a separate entity. We're now, fast forwarding almost 20 years, the protection from liability for environmental, quite frankly, probably will be lost when we change the board and the council people become board members, because the legal structure at that point will be very close to the city. But it will not transfer, or it will not destroy, the separation of legal title to the real estate, so that regardless of who the board members are, title, record title to the property will remain in EEF as an entity, as a corporation, which will still be alive and existing, and the lease will remain in the city. So title will be preserved and will not be destroyed. If you're talking about liability for environmental, it's quite possible that the city will take on the liability of environmental. The point is, is that it's now 20 years. There was a cleanup through the state, which has been completed. We do not perceive that there is any further environmental issue here, but that's a subject for the council. Our charge was, the council was concerned about EEF as a separate entity and having separate board members, and so we have proposed to you a scenario whereby we can preserve the COPs by preserving the legal entity called EEF, but allow the council people to be the board members, so that it will, in the council's point of view, will be an arm of the council and will not operate separately, which has been, what we understood was the issue. Hopefully, that clarifies.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I call on Mayor Proton Russell next.
I have another question. I don't know which of you would like to answer this question, but if the council can appoint a different board from the current board, does it have to be the council? Could it be someone else?
Absolutely. Be whoever you want.
Okay.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Berentine.
Again, referring to the meeting where, I guess, two of you, three gentlemen were there, there's a lot of concern from the board members, and part of the reason that they want to do this is they're concerned about the liability. And I understand that some, their own personal liability. And why shouldn't this council then be just as concerned? I mean, they just upped their personal liability for those board members quite a bit. This council isn't got that kind of personal protection. So I'm concerned that if they don't want that liability that's been created by this entity not really being separate, and there's the concerns there, why shouldn't this council be concerned about taking that on as well?
I suggest that you ask the three what their concern was. I don't believe it was a legal liability from environmental. I believe it was the concern that the council had issues with the way the board was operating. And they didn't want to be under the gun of the board, of the council, and therefore they wanted to withdraw. If the council is operating, then you don't have the same issue, do you?
Well, I would, no, I disagree if you're asking me. Absolutely, we have the same issue. I think...
But what is the issue? I don't understand.
The, the concern of how the, how the board was operating, one is that it was not a separate entity, arms-length enough a way to even ever protect the city from liability. And my question was never that we would have still the certificates of participation or that we would have title to the land. My question was that the entity that issued the certificates of participation could only do that because it was a separate entity from the city. It is never really...
That's wrong. That's wrong. That's an error.
It is never really...
I tried to explain that to you. That's an error. They issued the certificate of purchase because they were the record title owner of the real estate.
Correct.
Period. And this...
Because we...
Full stop.
And as I've read through the documents, we've given them, the city gave them the property, and then gave them the money, and then they issued the certificates of participation. And I might understand certificates of participation a little bit more than you might be giving me credit for, but EEF issued those certificates of participation, and by EEF doing that and being the holder of the asset, bypassed the voters from going ahead and taking that debt on. That's just the reality of the way that that worked. Now, I am not concerned about whether the title will still remain with us or not, but whether we would have had the opportunity to do that, bypass the voters, if it were the city doing it, and that, that makes me uncomfortable. The other issue, during the meeting, as you advised, the board, the council, your EEF Board, is that there have been questions about the way that that's been run, their RFPs, their lack of going out for bid, their lack of having contracts, their consistent refusal to answer any open records request or core request, and from the Stapleton case back in the late '90s, it was obvious that this was a body politic, and they were subject to that kind of transparency and scrutiny. And it was hardly an arms-length when we've got employees sitting as board members. As you advised them, I believe, that you say the risk that you run is that you destroy the separate corporate attributes of EEF, and the city takes on liability it never had before. So that's a choice, a political choice. So I do agree, that's something that we have to consider. But I can tell you, from a legal point of view, that's a very hazardous approach, but I say, I can't solve that problem for you. That's a political issue. So I do agree with you that your concern is to go ahead and protect the EEF Board, but not this council. And I'm concerned about the kind of liability and personal liability that we may be taking on to do this. That's the questions that I had. And I'm trying to go off of the information that you gave to that board. So I know where your loyalty lies and who you're trying to protect, but that doesn't fit with what we're doing here.
So I think...
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think the concern that staff had at the time was, for instance, myself, I have a professional engineer license, so I'm a PE licensed in Minnesota and Colorado. And so my concern was, when I'm serving, not in a capacity as staff, but in this sort of quasi-role as an EEF Board member, do I have any liability? So that was where that stemmed from. Not that I'm, you know, as a staff member, we're covered through the city's insurance and through professional liability coverage, but does that extend to EEF? And in this case, we do actually carry some special insurance for that, that purpose.
So that was why... Did you just recently increase that?
Point of order, can we go back to operating in the...
Thank you. I'd rather not go back and forth and back and forth.
And point of clarification, did you recently increase your personal liability?
Councilmember Berentine, sometimes you make up your own rules. Let's have one at a time.
No, I don't. Could you please just answer the question?
I do have some questions.
Could you please answer that question?
We did increase the insurance. I believe the personal, or the personal officer and director, thank you, insurance stayed the same, or within a few dollars.
My question would be, and other councilmembers chime in here, you don't have to just ask questions, you can actually make some comments and get some clarification if you're correct, to figure out whether you're correct in understanding this as well. to figure out whether you're correct in understanding this as well. So if we were to take this on as a council, I wanted to ask those of you that have been involved with these entities before, have you seen a council do this before? Or have you seen a council get into this kind of, what I'm going to call, a bit of ranker over this? And where you've seen them come out of it? I mean, there have to be other cases where things have gotten a little muddy over time. And do you have-
I have not seen this before.
Thank you for your honesty.
Nor have I. But I think there may be a misconception. We were presented with the-
Can you step up to the mic, so?
We were presented with the question of if the existing board members want to remove themselves, what are the options? And our first response was, it would be a problem if Eif itself were dissolved. And that's the title problem. That was the COP problem. So assuming Eif must continue as an entity, if the current board members wanted to withdraw, then our suggestion was, you will need new board members. Question was, who will be the board members? And to us, it was irrelevant who the new board members would be. They could be the council people, or as you suggested, they could be three or four or five or seven non-council people. That's up to the council. We're not suggesting that it has to be the council people. Our problem is, is that the council has had a laser focus on Eif and its activities. So the question is, who will be willing to serve in that capacity with the council, as concerned as it is, and with this being a lightning rod? So the suggestion was, well, the way to eliminate any of that problem is let the council people be the board members. But that's certainly not a legal requirement, and that certainly was not a requirement or something that we were pushing one way or the other. It was not the legal advice that we were providing that it has to be the council. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. So we have two issues that you all explained, one being the legal real property issue and whether or not we continued the entity, which needs to be in place legally in order to manage this whole complex. That has to stay, right?
Or you could pay it off as COP.
Or we pay it off, which is another option.
Yep.
Somebody can win the lottery. The second one is, is the issue of the environmental liability. And has anyone ever done anything to actually bring charges against that in any way at this point?
There is not. There's a phase two environmental site cleanup was completed, or document, as Mr. Miller mentioned. So there was a cleanup letter from the state that was received way back when.
Thank you. I just want the public to know that. We have not until, to this date, received any allegations, nor any complaint, nor any lawsuit that says that we have done something-
More than that, we believe that the environmental issue is a non-issue.
Yeah. Great.
I think there is.
Third, I'm going to let Councilmember Martinez, then I'll come back. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you for putting these recommendations together and providing us some options to consider. Where I sit on both of the questions, I think it makes a lot of sense for council to take on the role of the board members. It has been mentioned that Eif has been under a lot of scrutiny for processes and procedures over the last several years. And I think it makes sense for council to be, kind of bear that burden instead of scrutinizing other people. And if we want to do things differently, different processes and procedures, then we should put those in place and do that moving forward. So I'm in favor of council becoming the board members. And as far as a forensic audit, I'm not, I don't think we need one at this time. I'm interested in moving forward and not backwards. If we want to implement new processes and procedures, let's do that going forward. But I don't know what we're going to get out of looking back. So that's where I sit.
So, are you finished, Councilmember Martinez? One other question I have is, if council were to take this on, will we have the same kind of an insurance policy that could protect us and our own professional or personal lives?
Yes, it's my understanding that that, that directors and officers' insurance applies to whomever. So it would continue, in fact, to the, we can confirm that with the insurance agents, but that would continue to the new director or new board.
Councilmember Sierra.
Regarding the estimated cost of $55,000 for the forensic audit, what fund would that be coming out of?
Yes, the, we do have a, what's called a balance or a unreserved fund balance within the Eif budget, and so it would come from there.
Okay, so it's listed within the write-up, at least one of the funds, or it's on a high level, it does provide that type of information, or at least that account. Then my second question, in terms of the policies and procedures, are the current directors following at least the procurement process or at least the bid process for Eif at this moment?
We have not issued, I've been in place since June, we have not issued any new proposals, nor we issued any new contracts since then. But I do feel, I think in my write-up to council of October 11th, that that is an area that we would aggressively pursue in Q1 of 2019, is to go out for bids basically on all of those services. We found, looking through some of the contracts, there's some that are in place, some that are not. And so we would just start over again, basically, and go out for procurement for all of those services that the CAM provides.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the gentleman standing behind you, Director, what does, how long has the current board been in place? What does, how permanent have those positions been in recent years, as far back as you can tell at least?
Yes, the bylaws of the organization provide that the board will be selected by the city council, and absent some other selection, the board will consist of the city staff members that hold these named positions. And that has been the case-
Three persons.
From the inception of the organization through to date. My understanding is, some of the position descriptions have changed since then, and there have been some interim people in place, which has caused some confusion. But basically, it's been the same-
Same positions.
Holding those positions throughout.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Wink, are you finished?
I think so, for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Berentine.
To your issue on the contracts, at an hour and eight minutes into this meeting on June 25th, it's, somebody's asking that for me personally, to have a set of all the current contracts by lunch, if you could have somebody in your office so I could go over. If you have one complete set of documents, any contracts, any, I believe it might have been the city attorney, I don't, I still am not sure why she was at the meeting. And the answer is, we don't have contracts. We've never gotten involved in actual contracts, but we could send you the organization. So I have, on numerous occasions, asked for contracts, and now you're telling me there were contracts available. I mean, I kind of thought that maybe this explained it. If they've never had contracts through the period of time through this two decades practically, then that would be understandable, that I never received them when I requested them. But if you have some contracts, I have on several occasions asked for them so that we could kind of get a matching of how we're doing the budget. Because we have the budget side from Inglewood, and then apparently the supposed separate organization for Eif. And so I asked for contracts and they didn't get any. How many do you think you have?
So respectfully, Councilmember Berentine, it hasn't been, you haven't requested any since I've been here. So we've been digging through the documents.
Were you part of the meeting on June?
I was, yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you know who said that? Who answered, "We don't have contracts, we've never gotten involved in actual contracts"?
Yes, I believe that was the attorneys from Spencer Fain, is that what they were saying is, so we were trying to ascertain what level of contracts did we have with various firms? And they, that was their response, is that they haven't really gotten involved in the past in reviewing contracts, that sort of thing. So in our, as we've been going through documents, we have found several, for example, one with Twin City Security, who provides security on the site. I was able to locate a contract with them. And I believe we have one also with the fountain company who services the fountain.
I mean, there's, I mean, I think that it's understandable that there's been a lot of concern raised on how this has happened over the last 20 years. And I, myself, to speak to what Councilmember Martinez brought up, would never feel comfortable sitting on the board, this council sitting on that board, until a forensic audit is done from the inception of this organization, so that we understand what we're dealing with. And until we do that, I don't think we can really move forward. Comments like that are kind of rife in that meeting, and I would really advise the rest of council to listen to that meeting, put a lot of scrutiny into the situation they're getting into and what the employees are trying to get out of. It's not necessarily the focus on this board, but what's happened. So if you have any of the contracts, I would appreciate hitting them. But I'm sure you were all concerned about those kind of things going on. Thanks.
Thank you. Director, do you have anything more to add?
Just to say, I think, again, it's, you know, I think, just being relatively new to this, I bring no, you know, decision one way or the other. My recommendation, looking at it from the outside coming in, is to try to, again, ascertain where we are, what we should be doing. And again, our intent is to go out, whether staff continues to serve on the board or council, that we would go out for new contracts for all of this, because we have found some gaps there. Also, I think the premise for bringing this forward is that potential conflict of interest as we redevelop. So it's not so much personal as it is, how do we position ourselves? How do we position staff to bring you solid recommendations as we go forward with redevelopment?
I sure appreciate the work that you've done on this and bringing it back. We certainly knew for quite a while that we were going to speak about this tonight, so that new documents have emerged that someone typed up recently. It's a little surprising to me that we all don't have them, so we could look at them to see what the context of the conversation was. But I appreciate all the things you've been giving us context on here, because context is everything on this one, I believe. There are so many allegations that have been brought by just a real handful of people over and over and over again. In your time with this, those, the three of you that have been serving as the attorneys for Eif, do you have any perspective on that and what you think has been going on? I, we talked as a council, you may have known this a while back, to do a performance audit. It wasn't completely this council, I don't believe, that voted against doing that. I think that would have been the wisest thing we could have done at that point, to get a better idea of how this could be better facilitated, led, but we didn't go down that road. So now we're back to square one with nothing having been done for six months. What's your perspective, having heard this over time, forensic audit? I mean, I know you probably can't give legal advice at this point on that, but-
Well, my own thought was, I frankly consulted with one of the other municipalities as to what they do in a situation like this. And in particular, Denver. And as you know, Denver has a full-time auditor. I spoke to the retired auditor and said, "How would you approach a situation like this?". And he explained that there were questions being raised, et cetera. And he said, "Well, what you really need is a performance audit." And he said, "In a performance audit, you will find what are best practices. Are they being followed? If not, what are the recommendations? How can you tighten up the ship? What is missing? What documentation is missing? Is it being properly stored? Are the procedures correct?". And I could go on with the litany. And that was the genesis of the suggestion that a performance audit be done. A forensic audit is a totally different animal. A forensic audit is exactly what the name implies. If there was a litigation pending, or there was a criminal proceeding pending, you would hire a forensic auditor to go through and testify at one of those proceedings. In a totally different context, it would not give you anything about the procedures, the practices, how the entity had been operating, what best practices are. And, and, I don't want to misquote him, but as I recall, this is from memory, please take it for that, he said in his career, he does not recall having engaged a forensic audit. But he has done a number of performance audits, and usually by an outside firm, not by his own office. I do want to clarify one thing, because I don't want the record to be misconstrued. Councilmember Berentine, when you were reading those minutes, I believe that there is a misconception. What was being asked at that time was, does counsel, outside counsel for Eif, review contracts that Eif prepares? Or are those done internally? And when they said there, "We have no contracts", I was the one responding to that, and I said, "We do not get involved in reviewing those contracts. We've never been asked to review a contract." Indeed, there were contracts, and I don't, there's been a number of changes in that office, so I don't know how they've been retained. But several years ago, RTD, which, the contracts we're talking about are for the CAM, or for the operation and management of the common area maintenance. And those are the contracts, whether it's snow removal, whether it's landscaping, whether it's security, whether it's lighting. And a major participant in the CAM is RTD. And under the CAM agreement, every participant has a right to require an audit for the prior year, because they're being charged their percentage. RTD indeed came in and asked for an audit, and they did an audit. And at that time, all the contracts were delivered to RTD and were reviewed by them. The end of the audit was that they agreed with the number, and there was no adjustment. So I know there were contracts. I did not see them, they didn't come through my hands. The agreement with RTD was originally an intergovernmental agency agreement between the city and RTD. And that was then assigned to Eif to manage that contract. So I believe that it went partially through the city attorney's office at that time, who was involved with the RTD request for an audit. But again, I'm not positive of that, because I was not involved in the audit. But I was aware that the audit took place, and I did correspond with RTD with regard to their request for an audit. So I just wanted to clarify, when we said there are no contracts, what I was saying was, is that we as outside counsel did not have any contracts, because we were never asked to review them.
That was never your role, is what you're saying. Thank you for clarifying that. So I think some people have thought that, you know, you were supposed to be overseeing them, but I think we know that that's not true. Mayor Protem Russell.
Mr. Miller, I just have a question. Is you as outside counsel and the other outside councils, would you protect Eif board members from issues that are going on, either previous board members or current board members? Is that your responsibility? Or if there was problems, would they have to go to outside counsel?
Our client was Eif, was not the board members. We represented Eif, we did not represent the individual board members. If the individual board members had legal issues that pertain to them individually, they would need separate counsel.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And in fact, on occasion, that's exactly what occurred.
Okay.
And from time to time, individual board members did engage separate counsel.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then, with all due respect to the mayor, this is the second time that this has happened that I know of, that certain council members are being chastised because we have extra information that the rest of you supposedly don't have. When we go to research things, you have just as much time as Councilmember Berentine and I do. That was on the web, you could have gone to listen to it, you could have developed things. Why is it two council members' responsibility to make sure that the rest of the council has the homework and information that they need? And I am very concerned about this flippant attitude that this council should go ahead and take over to protect. Listen, I'm concerned about the city employees also. I want them protected. I want them doing the right thing. I want policies set aside so we can do the right thing. But to put ourselves in a position that we are not protected, that is a very unwise thing to do. And then this council sits here and doesn't do the homework and chastises the other council members who do.
Interesting response. Please. All I'm saying is that if I came across something that I would want you all to have, I would make sure that it was sent out to you. Councilmember Berentine, I'm sure there's more.
It is sent out to you, it's available to you on the web. Councilmember Russell and I did a lot of work in November of 2015 to make sure that this board, the Inglewood Environmental Foundation, at least made its meetings open and started putting the information on the website, so that it is available to everybody, and you were at those meetings and you were aware of it, and they are as available...
Councilmember Berentine.
They are as available to you as they are to me.
You made a comment that someone typed them up for you. Who did you have do that for you this week?
You could have gone ahead and typed them up for yourself. If you want to chastise any of the council member...
No, I'm just asking you.
For doing work.
I could have...
If you would, if you would stop chastising any council members for doing their work, that would probably be helpful. You seem to be a little confused at why the EEF board is coming under some scrutiny, and so I just want to go ahead and clear that up for you really quick. And I ran on this in 2015. In November of 2015, immediately after I was elected, I asked for that board to stop refusing open records requests and start being transparent. I asked for the financials. The next day, the city manager, Eric Keck, who had only been here a year, and the then soon-to-be assistant city manager, Murphy Robinson, the next day, came to Councilmember Russell and I and said, "I have turned their books over to the district attorney's office." I said, "Why?". He said, "Four things, and that's what I'd want in the forensic audit for sure." I wouldn't do my books this way. There are companies being, entities being paid that are being overpaid, there are entities that are being paid that are double-paid, there are entities that are being paid that no longer exist. I took him at his word, he turned it over to the district attorney's office. The district attorney's office came back with some conclusions that said that there was a statute of limitations, along with an admonishment that it is not illegal to waste taxpayer money. When I insisted on a forensic audit, I had two ex-mayors come here and start a recall on me. That is why the public believes that there is some problem being hidden by that EEF board, that there was some mismanagement over the two decades, and if we do not clear this situation up, so that both the employees and the city can go ahead and move forward, then I think we're fools. But I will not take on the responsibility for what has happened with EEF and the mismanagement and the skirting around Tabor and the skirting around the voters to go ahead and clear anybody. I think we need to go ahead and get this information done and bring it forward. That's why this information's come forward. I just got done with the recall, I survived that recall, I've gone out and talked to my constituents, they don't want to feel that anything is being hidden from them, not from last week, not from last year, and not from a decade ago. So that's why I believe it would be in everybody's best interest for us to go ahead, have a forensic audit, get these questions answered, and go ahead and move forward in either hold it accountable, change it, do what we can with the information, but we're not in a position where we can do that right now.
Director DeAndrea, what would you like from us tonight?
I think...
Do you want direction on, on this, or do you want us to, or is it okay for us to sit for a bit on it?
Yes, absolutely. So our next steps, if there was interest in bringing this back, we would bring a, there is a draft resolution included in the council packet, where we'd come back, probably at a meeting in December, for the council to take formal action on making the city council the EEF board. So that would be probably at that December 17th meeting. And then I think the direction for the forensic audit would simply be at that same meeting, but a separate action, just a motion to move forward, and then we would get actual proposals for that. So we're just estimating that cost at this time. So we would do a more in-depth scope of work and actually get proposals from firms before continuing that.
Thank you. I would like to ask our city attorney a question, if, if she's able to respond, and I'm not sure, Member Sierra, if you received the, the legal document that Councilmember Berentine is talking about and, and, or Mayor Protem Russell were involved with, and...
I received that.
You received that document, so you have it, okay. City attorney, in your perspective, can you remind us why we, why forensic audit was not something that you were particularly thinking would be helpful at this point?
With my background in public administration, what I know is, you are where you're at, you have all brand-new employees, and as angry as this council might want to be about what's happened in the past, you have all brand-new employees, they don't know what you're talking about. So they're trying to move forward with doing their job, which is, at this point, because of where the city's at, it's, it's different from where it might have been five or 10 years ago because of this redevelopment. So their roles are changing, and they're trying to figure out how to move forward as employees. And the goal of the performance audit was to educate the current, brand-new employees about past practices, what was good, what was bad, how it needed to be handled going forward. A forensic audit is going back and reviewing the existing audits. I don't think there's any question that audits have been done annually on EEF, as, at the same time that audits have been done for the rest of the city, and the same firms do those audits. So going back and reviewing to make sure the audits were done correctly at a cost, the costs that have been stated have started at $50,000, seemed like a lot of money to just do a recheck of, of what's gone on in the past, but I, I really would like, as a new employee, to know what's gone on and what would be better practices moving forward. So that's why I was more supportive of a performance audit than a forensic audit. Again, these are, these are policy choices. There also are some questions about making sure that you maintain your IRS status. I was talking to Mr. Rickles about who might be able to step in and service the board so that the current employees would be able to step back and do their jobs as employees, and he was reminding me that in order to maintain IRS status, that would have to be someone currently associated with the city, so it could be the city council, it might be other staff members, but as he was describing the IRS status, you wouldn't go outside the city for that. So it's, it's, a lot, a lot of what's discussed by council is what happened in the past. I think what your EEF board, your current EEF board is concerned about is how to move forward in the next four years as you're, as you have to maintain EEF, because you can't pay it off, but you're also going into this brand-new state of redevelopment. What is that going to look like, and what is the council's role in leading that? So all of that played into my thinking on the performance audit.
Thank you. And there, there was a judge's ruling on the information that was turned over by the city. Can you remind us what the, what the comment was that he made?
There was no judge's ruling, it was a...
It was a district attorney, sorry.
Investigator, and he was a new investigator to the office, and he put things into form, which I think made it really difficult to tell what he was trying to say. But his final finding was there was not enough evidence to support an investigation of the question.
Thank you. Council, we have like, no minutes left. I would like to suggest that we, that we come back to this at another study session, and I would like us to consider doing a performance audit. If we're going to do a, a financial audit of some sort and recheck all the numbers, then I want a performance audit with it as well. And I'd like to know what the current timeline would be for that and the cost of that would be, because I don't think we're going to get beyond this without having a full understanding of how this could operate in a different way than we are currently, and whether or not it would be wise for council to take this on versus other people we might appoint to this. Councilmember Berentine, and then Russell, and let's make it 30 seconds each if we can.
A clarification with the city attorney. You were present at the meeting on June 25th for EEF, and you have been advising EEF, and that kind of gives me some concern about a little bit of conflict of interest, because you're doing both EEF and this board, and I think that this council might want to consider having another attorney, a separate attorney, come in and advise us on what our options are and what our potential liability and situation with this is. I would, I disagree respectfully with the city attorney's assessment of the district attorney's report. He made it very, the investigators made it very clear that the statute of limitations had run out, because the city knew it was going on, knew these issues were going on, and had taken it to previous councils, and that the people who were suspect of mismanagement were backed up by the, then, by the councils at that time. So I think this is a lot more serious than you guys are giving it credence for, and you need to give this a little bit more thought before we go ahead and move on. I think a forensic audit as well, I disagree, is not just an, not, not just a review of the audits that have already been done, those have been done with the city, I don't know, you would go ahead and ask for specific information on what you would like them to go ahead and do. Some of that would be some of the ownership...
Could you please finish up so we can keep, we have one more.
And the ownerships of the different entities that have gotten millions of dollars are under question, and I think that those issues really need to be cleared up. A performance audit was discounted at the time, because it would not have satisfied the concerns that have come forward for how this has been mess-managed through decades.
All right, thank you. Remember, Mayor Protem Russell, and then we'll have to push this on to another study session, obviously.
And actually, I just have four quick questions that I would like to address at the next study session. What properties did the city transfer to EEF on EEF's inception? How many properties have been sold since then? What is still currently owned by EEF? And what addresses are we leasing as EEF to other individuals?
Thank you, that's, those are great questions, and let me ask council, if you think of any other questions you would want for the next time we come back to this, please forward those on to Director DeAndrea. Thank you. This will close our study session for now, we'll take like a five-minute recess, and then come back and begin the regular, regular meeting.